I'll entertain a motion to declare an open meeting.
I see move. Second.
Then first and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Your meeting is open. The open meetings rules are actus on the door back there if anybody cares to read that. Roll call Vicki.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Krista.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Myself here. Okay, well now looking to approve the consent agenda. So, what's the last month's agenda? Any other questions on that part of it? I'll go on to the findings. It's kind of a shock this month.
Yeah, I told you, don't get used to those fifty thousand dollar claims. Oh, obviously lots of, lots of resources that we ordered, uh, spent was big. We made a, we made a general fund disbursement activities, the annual general fund disbursement. We've done that a variety of different ways, Kelly, and I look back at that, sometimes precise amount to bring you up to solvency, sometimes it's wow, let's give ourselves a little bit more, a little bump, put them in the black a little bit, head new in the next year. So we, I think we put in everything we budgeted, didn't we, which was more than last season.
So they all see what's in there. Our eyes get big.
Yeah. So crazy.
I did miss the breakout of the activities schedule, wasn't in there.
Well, I thought you said you didn't want that.
No, we were getting duplicates of it, we were getting two. All we need is one, we don't need the, the breakdown of each, you know, what comes in.
We had each category and then we had each check.
Yeah. We'll look at that next.
Yeah, I sent you a picture of those, those are good, we should be good for another fifty years.
They look nice.
It's like a lot of bulletin board material.
Yeah, it is.
You know, those used to be half truck work at one time, it would have been a big hassle, probably ain't as much money to go ahead and shrink them down by less bulletin board.
We, the frames are still just solid as can be, I thought, and, and so we, well, we don't want to blow up these frames, so we were pretty fortunate to find something that, that fit in those. Uh, I know Gail had to go to some work, quite a bit of work actually to make them fit, but, uh, we're, we're pretty pleased with the end product.
So this fiber optic cables, that's something we had in the computer?
That was for the technology, yes.
And we've received a great refund on that, so.
The accounting software, is that what we talked about last month?
Yeah, actually only a couple hundred dollars more this, this time, but next year, next year probably see a bigger, like, lot of it.
See a lot of travel expense also for this month.
Um, administrator days for Dr. Aralt, Mrs. Novicki went to, um, national foundation. Mrs. Bearger directed, we attended something, which she tells me they're just type in the cash to that, probably talk to her about, we'll get reagreement for some of that, so.
We have four teachers go to training, we have two elementary teachers. The roof came in at eighteen hundred under budget, uh, something they didn't expect, which they couldn't actually do, which they anticipated doing, and he said it doesn't change the warranty or the quality.
That'll be in next, that'll come out of, it's in August dates, but it's building funds, you got that?
Oh, okay. So I didn't see that.
That was twenty nine.
Okay.
How we getting along with, uh, Rasmussen?
Gail, what did we have this month for Rasm, with Rasmussen? I haven't heard much about him.
That's just the.
Is that our annual?
Is that the annual?
That's just the, that's just the monthly maintenance.
Yeah.
It seems like about every time they come, they'll have a hassle, everything was going.
Well, you know, and, and Rasmussen has us a little bit, cause they, there's just, there's no competition out there for working on old steam boilers, that's what we have. You know, when they do come, they fix it, it's just.
Takes several trips or extra days.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented. Second, second. First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Public comment time, we're now portioning on the agenda, set aside for public comment, each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you when that five minute time period has elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plainview Public School District, offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comment outside our meeting. Everybody wishing to speak tonight?
I was gonna have Shirley and Deb talk during my, uh, suburban headings report, which may be a little ways down the road. So, I don't know if you guys are okay, but I wanted them to come share a little bit about their summer school experiences.
Do they want to stay that long?
You wanna stay three hours, you give it them.
I mean, it's up to you.
If you're okay with them, just.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Jensen and I teach summer school, I think I've done it for about twenty-four years at least, or whatever, and we start the process in April, and we contact all the teachers in the public school and at Zion. They give us a list of kids that they recommend go to summer school, and then we write them each a letter, and ask the parents permission for their child to go to summer school. And then, the fifty percent that don't send the letter back, we call them in May, and we get the names of the kids who will be coming. And then we set up a schedule, and we write the parents another letter telling them what their time will be. We meet during the month of July for four weeks, and we go Monday through Thursday, and we give Friday off because we have had such poor attendance on Fridays because people like to get away for the weekend, so we switched to the four day week. Um, the skill, I go with the kids that are kindergarten through third grade, and we work on, you know, a lot of the pre-reading skills, the phonics, the things that the teachers recommended to us, or whatever. We meet for hour and session at a time, each group comes for an hour. My groups this year, one of them was three, the other one was six, or the others were six or five, so it varies between about the number of kids that are in that class, or whatever. So, and we have a good time, the kids enjoy it, I know one little boy at the end, and he said, oh, he said, I'm gonna miss this so much, he said, I wish I could just keep coming to summer school, so that's good, I appreciate that, myself.
Well, like Shirley said, we actually emailed, I emailed all the teachers and asked for specific skills in reading and math, so that those are the skills that these kids, kids need extra practice with. I work with the kids that are going into fourth grade through seventh grade, which is a great challenge for me, so when I started four years ago, I thought, how am I gonna get them interested in summer school? Because I know my kids wouldn't wanna come, give up an hour. So, since then, I've been doing it, I, I base it on a mystery unit, and they read a chapter book each group, and that chapter book has seven books in the series. So they're very frustrated at the end of the book because the, these four kids never gets rescued. But, and then they'll end of the, um, and we work on math and reading skills, and then the last day, we have a murder mystery party for kids. And then we join Shirley's group and we have a picnic. Shirley and I provide the food and, and fun, so the kids have a good time. So far, I enjoy summer school a lot, and the kids come, and I think they do too.
How many students did you have?
I'm guessing sixteen for me.
I think I had eighteen.
How many Shirley?
Eighteen.
Okay. And do you have a good percentage of parents that are willing to send their kids to summer school?
Yeah.
I'd, would you say over fifty percent of the ones probably run ahead?
Yeah, we have to really do a good job of telling them that this is not, cause we have another grade program in, in June that Whitney and Katie do, that's just more like for fun, reading. You know, and we want ours to be fun too, but we are actually, are skill based specifically for what they need some extra practice with. So we have to explain that to parents, that this is not the same thing, this is what your child could probably use a boost before school starts.
Do you actually have tests and stuff, you don't go that far?
We don't do any tests, no, it's all, it's all review, no, we don't introduce new concepts or skills. It's the skills that teachers email me about, this is what these kids need. Maybe it's division practice, or what have you, or comprehension, or fluency, so that's where we develop our lessons.
Be nice to hear, like at semester or something, the teachers that have these kids, to see what they feel like. You know, they came back to school a little bit ahead than what they normally would.
Well. It's good review, I, I'm not so sure that you will see them ahead, but we don't want them to go behind.
Sure.
We don't want them, we are hoping that our goal is for them to, where they finished in May, to be at least there in August, which all kids lose over the summer, that's just normal. But we want to give these kids an extra little boost, so ahead, that would be great, that would be our goal.
Yeah. Yeah, it's. But ahead for them, not ahead for what they're supposed to.
Yes, yes. And I, I think they like coming, this year Shirley and I were concerned about being in the library together, her group, and, cause I have the older kids, and, and we just put their back, her kids were facing that way, my kids that way, and it worked, it went really, really smoothly, I think. We didn't have any, but they're, they're a great group of kids that come to see us, so. And you get to know them more on a, a smaller group basis, and I just love teaching summer school, so, you have any questions, something more?
My question is that Shirley to do a wonderful job, we appreciate that, thanks for telling us.
Well, I think Shirley does. Well, it's, it's just in the mornings, but yeah, you can see the easy.
It is a wonderful program, cause I know kids do lose so much during the summer, and.
Yeah, I have a, well, the seventh grade, the kids going to the seventh grade, I will miss them a lot, Mr. Reed came in, and I, he sat down, he visited with them, I said, are you gonna be teaching them next year? He goes, yeah, and I said, they're my kids, so. Right, you and I understand that.
There probably some days he'll send them down to you too.
I would take them every day, I would take them every day. Yeah, yeah, so anyway.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we can stay if you want.
I'm gonna go home.
Any other public, public comments everybody's given? All right, we're going discussion items, number eight, summer maintenance update.
Gail, and Ron, have you got similar and a little bit different things to maybe kind of share, but?
Yeah. So, uh, last month at this time, I'd said worst case would be we wouldn't get six units in, but we'll get them in, we didn't get them in. Except we came in Thursday, so tonight, Gail just told me.
Yeah, I just got a call from, uh, the, what was it called?
Cody, the sheet metal installer.
He said either they're gonna be here ten o'clock tonight, they work through the night and through tomorrow.
To get those, so we have.
So they're in, Ron?
They're here, on their trucks.
Yeah. Good that they're here.
Yeah. So the bad news is that they haven't shown up, and we have a little bit of an electrical panel problem that'll be fixed, that's supposed to be shipping now. The good news is the rooftop units are cooling the building down, and we know, we're fortunate because today was hot, tomorrow and the rest for two weeks is supposed to be eighty. So, um, tomorrow, we'll be having a fire alarm inspection, I understand that that might conflict with something, but it might not. You can ask them to hold off or whatever, if there's alarms going on.
And they may be drilling in the kitchen, cause I know one of the units, so that, you know.
The kitchen unit won't be put in tomorrow.
Oh, won't be in tomorrow, okay.
So. So anyway, my apologies for that. There's, if you look in each, uh, classroom over there, you'll see the ceiling tiles that the sprinkler heads are, and those need to be fitted, we'll be getting those in the next couple of days before school starts. Otherwise, a, a classroom will be in good shape. On side note, I noticed one of the classrooms got the bookshelf in, it looks really nice, so.
That covers the whole area?
Yeah, which we had nothing to do with by the way, but I just noticed.
Finished, it's, yeah, it's getting these things finished.
And I saw the boards, looked great. So, that's what we're up against, and, um, again, uh, we're working diligently to get it done. And once the panel, the electrical issue is settled, then we'll have the optimal cooling in each room. And the units that are now cooling the building are the fresh air supplementary and also for the hallways. And, uh, but it's good to know that they will cool the place down in a pinch, because that's what they're doing. But once the units are working, it'll be a lot better, so. Any questions?
So you haven't started, uh, teaching Gail how to run the whole system or anything like that yet, until you're all done?
No. So once that's all behind us, we will have an official startup and training.
All the sprinkler lines and all that, they're, they're all charged, no leaks, no problems with that?
Sprinkler lines have been charged and tested, this fellow that's coming will also put his blessing on all that too, but with the, the pressure tests, so.
So do we end up putting sprinklers outside those two front doors and?
Four.
Four doors?
Each and three way you got a sprinkler.
And that's done?
They're not finished, but they're.
They're piped in.
They're piped in, the insulation is, it's coming yet, we don't need it today, but, I mean, so that still has to be insulated over into that. That was to a piece of fire marshal, he's been here probably half a dozen times this summer, I saw him the last time he was here. Uh, we've got a good one, he's a reasonable man, you can have a conversation with him, not feeling intimidated. He does like our, our cupboards, our hallway cupboards, wants to confiscate them, I said, if you, you find a coke, we're in violation, and then you can take it, he said, you are. Because we have combustible materials stored in, in, in a corridor, can't do it, but he's a good man, I said, you know, we're, we're gonna be okay here. He gave us a couple other strong recommendations, not root nut, log, but recommendations, I said, we'll take those under advisement. So, a, a good man there, and, um.
What were those two things?
Magnetic door releases for the, for the, uh, bulk purpose room, rather than the stops, stops they, they don't like at all, would like to have those tied in. And, maybe it was move all the paper stuff out of being stored, no, we gotta move a, a fire hybrid down, so it's one foot off the ground, accessible up to four feet or something, you know, the simple, uh, things.
We have a fire hybrid?
Fire hybrid in the kitchen.
Oh.
A fire extinguisher.
Fire extinguisher. Kind of saying it's very similar, it's a hybrid.
Yeah. Spray water on it. A dog would have a problem.
Fire.
So the official finish to the project will be the official startup, training with Gail, and whoever Gail decides should be in there. And, uh, walkthrough, which we've already done one or two times, but, uh, if we see a ceiling tile or something, something's not painted or something, uh, we want you to be satisfied at the end. And, uh, so, that hasn't officially happened, you know, the final walkthrough, so.
So there won't be any crews in here working, once teachers are here and students are here, you won't have anybody here during the day finishing up or?
Shouldn't have anybody, we will sneak in and out at different times if we have to.
Definitely not on Thursday when the kids are here, but.
There's still many to set it here, you know, next day.
Yeah, then once school starts, there's two units we're waiting on, and we will sneak in under the dark of night and get them done, so. Sorry about that, so.
You understand, well, I'm sure you're doing your best, just.
Appreciate it.
Gail?
Looks very nice.
While Ron's still here, before we cut him loose to home, is there? Don't have any questions?
For him. I got to say, one day I walk in, I think it was a Monday or something, and I know your air conditioning units weren't all in, but I could tell immediately when I walked in there, the fresh air, the coolness, and it just felt, yeah, it just felt really good.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be better than that, yeah, of course you're gonna have a lot of kids too, so they might offset it a little bit.
You can definitely tell the difference.
Yeah.
Sure.
And like we said before, this will be a healthy building, cause you will get the correct amount of fresh air coming in. And we all will take advantage of the fresh air when you don't need cooling or heating, you can use that, so. All ready? Thanks.
Gail? Obviously, uh, Gail, two weeks ago, if you went in the elementary, I had multiple people say, just like last summer, well, it looks like we're gonna start school on time. And Gail and his crew worked around those guys at, at, and however they could, and in, in three days' time, it went from, we can't start school on time to, it looks like we have kids tomorrow, so. And Gail does amazing work, goes without saying.
We just work together and, uh, like I said, well, we could, and people we could when we could, and, uh, I'm sure you see our time cards, you might see how many hours, but, uh, but it, it all come together pretty much. Uh, a little bit of waxing that needs to be done yet in the lunchroom, cause they're still keeping going in and out of there, but we'll get that at some point. And, uh, I think this building is basically ready.
Carpets rolled.
Carpets in, you've seen that. Wore the little carpet that need to be replaced in the elementary, but nothing very big, so, uh.
Are all the other cases in then, that Jim made?
Uh, I, he's got the cabinets in, I believe, but he does not have the, the countertop set on it, so.
Doors are on the front, or there's a shelf?
It's just shelf, it's just shelf, it's gonna, it'll match almost identical to what was the original, so it's gonna look pretty nice.
Will they be done next week, we don't know?
I, I don't, I don't know, I haven't talked to him today, I know the door is open, and I'm sure he'll be here tonight, so.
The, you know, you, you measured a building off site, bring him in, adjust shim, adjust shim, stick in there, tape back out shim, so, I'm sure he had, he probably anticipated that a little bit, it's maybe been more than he had hoped.
Sure.
Cause that's where those, where those units sat, the concrete's uneven, so it changes the pitch of all, all those cabinets, and, and, so he's got a lot of little changes, adjustments to make, to make it look right, so.
And, and that's what I feel about Jim is.
It'll be right when it's done, yeah, it'll be right.
So it's taken a little more time, I think, which is all right.
Rather have it that way than look like crap.
We'll have the flags up and the doors open come Monday morning, or Thursday morning.
You were planning on sleeping for a couple days.
You might not know what day it is.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate all your hard work, I know you're working well into the morning sometimes, so. Okay, number nine, Skills USA, which I don't really know for sure what's.
Skills USA is just something, it, it's just some terminology, I've got a, uh, for a, a series of experiences for kids. Bob Evans is here tonight to address it more specifically, he knows all about it, but this is something that I learned at a conference, and I bring back and say, maybe this is good for our kids. This also has to do with our earlier discussion about the Watson Building, so that will be part of this discussion, uh, Bob will let you introduce yourself.
I'm Bob Evans, uh, and I want to thank each one of you for what you do. I am the school board president at Crofton Public School System, been a board member for twenty years. And it's truly an honor to be elected by my community service board member, being a board president, so I, I thank you very much for what you do. With that, I have some free stuff for you, so I'm gonna approach you, it's not a threatening kind of deal, but we have some, uh, brochure here.
Well, that's more than we've gotten so far, so.
You guys are fighting over there some shoe bags and some pins and some lanyards or whatever, but you can have that, and I could have it present first, but anyway, so. This is my thirty-second year of teaching school, and I know I look way older than that, but it's, thirty-second year of teaching school, and it's funny, last year was my first year at Orchard, and I was, went to, uh, two day training for new teachers. Thirty-first year of teaching school, so I'm just like, mm, you know, whatever. I did have the pleasure of, uh, this year, I, I've, historically, I've, I've always been a part of wonderful school systems. I taught Vermillion High School, Yankton High School, Smith-Viguer, Sainte High School, all wonderful places to be. Been in a part of and competed at national competitions, uh, been a Disney Award winner, blah, 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 all that really doesn't mean anything. Bottom line is, I'm all about providing opportunities for students, and Skills USA is just that, it's a huge opportunity for students. Everything Skills USA is written to the state standards for the programs, for instance, if it's, if it's an automotive related competition, they pull state standards out from the state of Nebraska, and those, um, standards have benefited that competition, so it is a wonderful experience. There's over a hundred competitions at the state level. Fortunately, last year, I guess I'm gonna pat myself on the back here, I just came back from Louisville, Kentucky this summer, I had a, a young lady who was in job skills demonstration. Uh, she's an eighth grader, gonna be a freshman, she demonstrated a job skill in open class of vaccinating animals, so she took a pear and a banana, and used the different tissue types, and then gave a shot to a pear and a banana. And, and said it was the size of an animal, and calculated all the dosages. She won a regional competition, won her state competition, we took her to Louisville, Kentucky, and she came back the national champion, so. Have the pleasure of working with a national champion in Skills USA, um, fantastic, and I just, I'm sure to tell you that that's just because I gave her the opportunity to do it. It's not, I didn't really have a lot to do with that, I drove the van, you know, and those kind of things, and made all that work, but, you know, like I said, it's about providing opportunities, and Skills do that. Skills is huge, 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 and in leadership, you know, and like your HVAC guy here, he's a, he's, he, we talked for fifteen minutes, thank you for sending him over here, and talked for fifteen minutes about that. Yes, he can find people to bend sheet metal, put pipes together, he can find that, but he can't find the person that's gonna be the leader of those people, and have those skills, and Skills USA is about leadership, and it really is, it's about, you know, setting yourself apart, doing those things that make you that person that people cannot afford, not to have in their company. I, in this Skills USA competition thing, I had a chance to meet my bro, sitting down with my bro from Dirty Jobs, and talked to him a little bit, he went with the Koch Brothers, which, you know, whatever you wanna say about that, the Koch Brothers, they're up there on the stage talking. And he says, you can walk into any manufacturing company in the United States and, and get a job, if you have the kind of mentality where you walk up to the boss and, and say, I'm, I'm gonna work for you for two weeks, I'm gonna be the first person here in the morning, I'm gonna be the last person to leave, and I'm gonna work two weeks for three. And in three years, I'm gonna have your job. And about a hundred percent of those people get hired, you know, so that's the kind of mentality and, and, and what we're looking for, and Skills USA is all about that process and making that happen. As far as, uh, uh, the Watson Motor Building, I don't know exactly where we're headed to go with this process or whatever, but I drive through Plainview by choice sometimes to look at the Watson Building, the building, when I'm driving to Orchard to teach school. And I've never, uh, said that I'm, uh, community growth, that I'm a part of, you know, making Plainview the best town on the planet Earth, although you have all the key components to make that happen. Having the highest ACT scores in the state of Nebraska is outstanding, having the work ethic that you do in your community is outstanding, putting those things all together, and having the facilities that you do is, is just amazing. I talked with the commissioner of education several times, Matt Bloomstead, him and, he and I are friends, and, and he is a economic development guy, and when I talked to him about the idea, the potential that we had, and, uh, saw the, 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 the ability for the growth that's here. I have some websites that I'm gonna share with you, I'm gonna pass it out, this, the first one is, is called hthree.me.gov, it's a website that your tax dollars pay for, and what it is, is, uh, and I don't know if your school uses it or not, guidance counselors or whatever, but, I, it's kind of something that you shouldn't be without, I mean, it's kind of my right hand. Uh, every week, my, uh, junior high students go and do a report from, from hthree.me.gov, it's the top ten jobs that are high demand, high skill, high wage jobs in the state of Nebraska, and then you can break it out by regions. And so, uh, if you look at those top ten jobs, you know, automatics, construction, uh, um, HVAC people are on there, and, uh, truck drivers. You know, all those foundational skills that are a part of me being a skilled in the second, technical science teacher, shop teacher, are a part of that, so, you know, if you take a look at that website, it's pretty self-explanatory, easy to look through, then there's the Skills USA. Then there's the Skills USA National in Nebraska, and then there's NATEP and the Automotive Welding Soc- uh, excuse me, American Welding Society. And then there's YouTube there with my bro, so take a look at those things. They're all resources, I, I, you know, so if you're looking around, or interested, or curious, there's a lot more information out there for you to take a look at. Uh, skills is, uh, is a driving force of what I do every day. As a new teacher, I would say to a new teacher, you know, get your kids involved in skills. They're like, well, don't you have to teach the state standards? And yeah, that's, like I said before, that Skills USA is built around the state national standards, so you're doing that, you're taking care of all those things. So I will be guided by your questions if you have any, or what would you like to know, or what more would you like to know?
This is something we can provide, and I feel we can provide for our kids with what we're doing now. Their culinary arts are in here, welding is in here, building construction and trade is in here. It's part of Skills USA. Uh, Mr. Aarhart, you know, is, is, he, he was the one that brought it to my attention before I went to this breakout session to, to learn. That's why I went to it, is because I have a teacher working on a master's degree in building construction who's demonstrated, you know, a level of interest and aptitude and skill and so on. So, so I dug deeper. Uh, Bob and I came into contact with each other last spring and, and just started, you know, talking about some things and, and more opportunities for kids and that led us to, you know, the Watson Building and just, and, and thinking big. You know, could, could this be a, a great place to educate kids, give kids skills in a, in a different area? And so, um, you guys are, are aware of that. I've talked to the owner of that building, uh, twice. He's ve- he, he very interested in, in, uh, us giving kids in northeast Nebraska the skills that he could hire. Um, so a lot of things point in the direction of, okay, would this be something that we could invest in? Cause ultimately it would come down to a large investment to give kids these experiences. Uh, and would maybe require us to look at our, uh, requirements for credits and those kinds of things. Because some kids would track a certain way, and we'd, we'd be offering something new. It'd be like, if we offered another sport in the fall, okay, that's gonna affect everything else that we do in the fall. You know, so, you know, there, there's, would be discussion that would need to have. I, I, I enjoyed talking to Bob because he's a, you know, he know, I, obviously knows a whole lot about this, but also at, at, at the highest level, he's a national champion. You know, so guided by, by him, uh, I snooped around, asked some questions that you asked me to ask and contacted some people. Bob and I met at the Watson Building today at fi- at four-thirty. Um, looked at, checked it out, his trained eyes, well, okay, here's what I see. Lee gave us kind of tour, talked with us a little bit, uh, knowing that that could be some potential awkwardness, uh, on what's, you know, going on there. But, uh, but still, we're, we're guided by, uh, giving our kids opportunities that, you know, they could benefit from. We know we, we had, we had the number one ACT composite in the state, so when the, when the factors are right, we know that we can give kid, you know, we, we have kids that are smart. We know we got the college bound, those four-year college, but we, we know that we've got those kids. Okay, but we also have kids that need the trades. Feel we do a great job of that. Is it complete? Is there something we're leaving out? Is there something else we can do that we're willing to make an investment in? And so, it kind of has brought us to this point. And we can go from this point on, wherever, you know, you're, you're comfortable with, or whatever you, you'd, you'd like to consider. So we would take, I would take, you know, marching orders from you, and then, uh, if that included more conversation with Bob, more conversation with the owner of the Watson Building, uh, that's what I will do.
You know, the skills thing is huge. I'm in Orchard, there's twenty-eight, no, I'm sorry, twenty-nine kids in the high school now this year, and, and we, we're gonna have, between Clearwater and Orchard, we're together as far as Skills USA, we're gonna have, we're gonna have over fifty, close to seventy percent of our students are gonna participate in Skills USA. Because, you know, the instructor that was before me, Michael Dell, has, have built something. And, and I came in, I saw something that was fantastic, and I said, well, this is fantastic, but in order to continue that, I believe, you know, as, as the pyramids would prove, you gotta have a big base. You know, I got a big base too, but, you know, a big base, a pyramid's got a big base, so I'm like, we gotta get these junior high kids involved and start it. You know, if you wanna premiere wrestling program, you gotta, gotta start somewhere, right? You gotta start with little kids and work with them. And Skills USA, I said, the junior high thing is where it starts, it's, it's this place. And, and so we, we, we have a good foundation and we continue to, to work and work and work in that, in that process. But I would say that, you know, bringing your junior high kids along to Skills USA is a great investment in their time and effort. And if nothing else, they go and they say, there's a hundred competitions, they don't like any of them, well, check that off the list, I don't wanna do this. And they, they've invested a little bit of time and effort, they don't find anything, but I would challenge any student in high school to find something on that list that doesn't fit them personally. There's something there for everyone, and, and not as job skills open, which is you just pick something that you do, love to do, and you go demonstrate that to a group of people. And say, this is what I love to do, this is what I do. And if you do a good enough job of it, you can get yourself on them big old medals at the national competition. So, something for everything, and, and like I said, the Watson Motor thing is just dear to my heart. When I cut myself, I bleed ten W forty, you know, whatever, in motor oil. So I just, it's just me, and, and I, I know that statistically, and the Department of Labor says, we need technicians. And if you look at the projection, when you go to H3 dot any dot gov, which I know you will, because obviously you're best in this process, you're gonna see in twenty-twenty-five, the demand, the increasing demand for carpenters, for wilders, for automotive technicians, et cetera. And I'm, okay, I'm like selfish here because I live in Crofton, I need Crofton to do this in the worst way, and it's not happening at the rate or the pace that I know it needs to happen. You know, should draw thirty, forty mile an hour, forty mile ring radius around this town, the population is huge. And your community can serve that population and have this be the Mecca. So if you wanna be an automotive technician, this is where you wanna come to school, right here. You can't go wrong. I mean, that's the deal, and even if kids, they go to their homeschool in the morning, come here in the afternoon, however you wanna schedule all that magical process, you know, and we're talking, thinking about the potential of having industry certification, where when you walk out the door as a senior, as part of your diploma, you can have an NATEP automotive certi- certificate. You know, you can be certified automotive technician at entry-level job skills. And so, in the same way, there's a potential, I mean, if, if they wanted to be American, well, thank you, probably won't, I'm wanting to be American Welding Society, uh, we'd give you that too, with me, certified welders. Yes, sir.
Could you be kind enough to explain the mechanics of the function of this program? I mean, you've got a diversity of things that you're offering, but who's actually gonna oversee, you know, if you have fifty kids in and they're all doing something different, who oversees that to where it's adequate?
In the Skills USA part?
Yes.
Yeah, so what, what we're doing in Orchard now is because I'm not obviously, well, I did do Bachelor Bob when I was a four-H guy a long time ago, but I'm not a culinary arts specialist. So we call in all the specialists. Right now, we went from two people as a part of Skills USA to, well, four advisors. So all the people, if you have, if you have a, a family consumer science person, they'll come in and do their part. So we, we're gonna have four advisors to make it happen, plus, we rely heavily on our business and repart- industry partners. You know, there's things about HVAC that I don't know and understand, but I know people in Orchard, Nebraska that can help those students. So if nothing else, it's getting our students in the community, working with, getting something back to, or giving something back to the community by having them be invested with those people.
Do you get a very good response?
Definitely, rock solid. Yep, we, they're believers. I mean, we are, and it's kind of like, cause when I did this before in South Dakota, I said, uh, you know what? I wanna have the best auto mechanics program in South Dakota. In order to do that, my kids need resources, like reading, reads, material resources that's current. I could go out and buy brand auto mechanics textbooks, and by the time they got delivered, they were obsolete. So I went to the South Dakota Automotive Dealers Association, a friend of mine, John Hegeman, I said, John, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a year, my students get the best auto mechanics textbook every year, online, that's updated every week, month, something comes out new, it's updated, ba-da, ba-da, ba-da. I go, this is what I need to have, John, for our kids. So he gets on the phone, he's the president of the South Dakota Automotive Dealers Association. They said, okay, here's a check for this year, and don't even bother to ask, have the subscriptions sent to us, we'll take care of it. Because, and I'm like, that's great, and he goes, now, Bob, thank you for the opportunity, because we're making an investment in our future through your kids. And so I don't have a problem with calling the Nebraska Automotive Dealers Association and laying down the challenge, you know, here it is, right? If you're gonna make better automotive technicians, they need to have the resources. And so that's where we're at, and plus that, having the online textbook, seventy percent of my students that cared about being automotive technicians never came to my room and sat down and did a piece of paperwork, never came to my room and were on a computer. They're like, Mr. Evans, today, I'm going to pull that CV shaft out of the front of that Honda over there. I'm like, okay, let's get a job order, let's go to Mitchell On Demand, let's print out the, the torque specifications, tighten it up, and let's print the paperwork, and let's get to work. That's what they did. I did have some students that, that didn't do that. I mean, they came in and sat at the computer and did the work which other kids did at night to take care of that thing. But it gives you that latitude where if you're really interested, you wanna do this, I'm gonna do this and make it work. And we did have volunteers come into the auto cakes lab, because when you have that many kids inspired that much, where you had volunteers come in to help with labs and lab projects, because it's kids, even for a gearhead like me, it's a lot of stuff going on. It wasn't any traditional classroom where today, we're all gonna work on brakes. It's like, you're working on brakes, you're taking out an engine, and you're working on CV shafts. So it's all kinds of stuff like that, but yeah, it takes a huge amount of community support to make all that work.
So after looking at that building, how many different skills do you think a guy could incorporate into that building, and how many different teachers would it take to keep all that?
Okay, to run, to get a certified auto mechanics program out of that building would take, I have to complete my certification order for the program certification. But there's a different way to go. I mean, you don't have to go to be NATEP certified. You can go and produce automotive technicians. You can go and produce people that are entry-level and ready to move to, to go to northeast. You can finish the first year of a northeast program here and be, they're a year away from being done then. With myself and, and potentially maybe another person, maybe another lab assistant, maybe the two gentlemen that work there every day, all day long, can do their thing. Because just depends on how all the logistics have worked out. They can work on cars and still do their business while we're there teaching and doing our education, we can work side by side, maybe everybody happy, everybody grows. Live work is real.
So not every teacher has to be a, have a master's and be able to teach college course level courses, no?
No, no, not, not for the NATEP, they don't care. They just want automotive technicians that are trained, that are certified. You have to, I have to pass some testing or become a NATEP certified trainer. And the same with the AWS, American Welding Society. First of all, I have to prove well, that I can weld, check, I can weld. And then you gotta go take a test and say, uh, now you can be a certified welding inspector, certified welding instructor. Like I'm, I'm in this big business for thirty-two years, I have a master's degree in thirty-six hours. I'm here because I saw that building, I had crazy idea, found out who owned the building, found your leader that you elected to be your leader, and we kind of got together, sat in a room, and, and I don't know, the room just about exploded with the energy because of the potential. And like I said, it happened, you know, west here where, uh, okay, I'm gonna do, be real honest with you, uh, northeast tech put this college out here in O'Neill, and they're really struggling with keeping people coming indoors, right? Well, you, you gotta have, you gotta have, like you guys do, have this pool, this of resources in order to make it work. Cause if you build a building in somewhere, you're not, you're not doing what needs, what your community needs to be successful, and that building's not gonna, what are you gonna do with it? Here you have, obviously, the H3 proves that there's a high demand, you have the most intelligent group of students on the planet Earth, here, right here, right? And so you're ready to go. You, you have a tremendous opportunity.
I've heard that if you do these things, there's a lot of people out there willing to supply you with all the tools, equipment that you need, just maybe it shows up. Is that, I mean, is that?
Not, not realistically, but it's potentially there. I, I did have a conversation three or four years ago with, uh, oh, help me, D-Wall, where, uh, we're gonna have electricity and electronics in my building. Cause I built this building in my little head on a piece of paper, got an engineer, and we're gonna teach electricity and electronics. We're really gonna become the D-Wall Warranty Center, and we had all, we could get all the D-Wall tools we wanted. Everything that was new, we got to use it, as, as long as we were there warranty center, we're gonna pay you the warranty work. Yeah, and Snap-on, Snap-on says, when your school district or a school district says, okay, we're gonna, we're thinking about this. They'll come in, measure your building, show you everything you need. If you can be a showcase for Snap-on, they'll help you out price-wise, right? And education, Snap-on is, is a good friend. Snap-on is really has super high quality stuff. Most people can't afford to buy it, real technicians can't afford to be about it. So you, you, you have that, but they're work with education. When my nephew went to Wildtech for auto mechanics, uh, he bought his tools off, he sold them back to the Snap-on truck and made money. Cause the Snap-on truck couldn't buy it for what he bought it for, educational price, so Snap-on's one of the ones. And there's good bones in that building, like we said, there's, obviously, it, it's fifty years old. You know, I bought it, picked it down there a long time ago. So, but it, it has an opportunity and it's a great facility.
On your estimate, how long have we decided to say, we wanna keep going down this road? Could it be possible by next school year? It's gonna take a couple of years?
We could, by next fall, you could have an auto mechanics program in that building, yes. It, would it be a certified program, NATEP certified at that point in time? Probably not. I mean, I don't, there's not enough hours in the day between now and next, but the year after that, could it be? Could it be something that you go to be certified?
Yeah. So you would go like from automotive mechanics, and then you would add welding and add this and add that as a group?
You could add whatever building you wanted to, however you wanted the building to be. If you look at it, when you look at H3 dot any dot gov, you know, well, there's really hard to come by. HVAC people are hard to come by, you know, and truck driving school. My building that I have that I drew with the engineer had culinary arts. It had alternative energy, wind powered energy in there. It had machining, welding and fabrication in there, in my building. So, you know, I, I guess I'm a dreamer, but it's all about giving kids opportunities. And, uh, I firmly believe that somebody in northeast Nebraska's make, can make this happen. But I do believe that you have all the critical components to make it happen and happen real big, right here in the community. And I do talk to lots of them. But I taught school for thirty-two years. But I, I do appreciate the opportunity and thank you very much for your time. I, he has my phone number or whatever, and, uh, I'm a phone call away if you have questions. Those websites are wonderful. Greg Stur is the director, state director of Skills USA on the back of there. If you call him and say, hey, Bob Evans, and you can answer all my questions, he'll do that for you. It's just.
Can you tell me what percentage of your kids at Clearwater Orchard are online with this, with your classes? Is it more online or more hands-on?
Online, this is almost entirely hands-on. There's not a lot of computers where he does this at all. Um, there are a few, there's some computer networking classes and some cable in classes or whatever, but most of this class is done hands-on. And for me, Skills USA, it's this, is that I, I, I was a pretty good athlete, and I had that place, right? My sister was a pretty good academic, so she had that place, you know, she went to USD and won the math contest. I could go and make a couple tacos, even name the paper, yay, right? But then my brother, he was like, didn't do any one of those things. Like, if I had to ask him to fix my car, my brother's been fixing my car, right? And he needs his place, every dog needs his day, right? And, uh, so we need that place, that opportunity for those kids. So it is an opportunity, you know, like I said, just with the girl with the gold medal, you know, I'm not, I'm being egotistical, but if I don't go to Orchard and say that we must have, really need to have junior high skills, she doesn't have gold medal. That doesn't make her less intelligent or anything like that, but it just gave her an opportunity for her to have that time, that place.
So would you start with the junior high and then work on up, or would you start out with seniors?
In skills?
Yeah, I mean, if you put this together, seniors could, even though they only have one year, that'd be enough time to.
In Skills USA, you start with the little ones, but have everybody in there, everybody, you know, because if you're a senior, like I said before, if you're a senior and you go to Skills USA and you go to one contest and, uh, you know, you say, that's not really what I wanna do, you know, that, that, that automotive thing was, I get there and I went to all the industry leaders, and that's really how it was, I'll check that off my list, right? Or if I go there and I do find something, right, that childcare thing is just super cool, maybe this is my future. I, I, I wouldn't leave anybody out, you know, I would offer it to the seventh graders and push, push, push for my upper level kids to get in there and make it happen.
So when you, excuse me, when you say go to contests, how many contests are there with these kids?
Good, uh, Skills USA for high school students is you just go directly to the state competition. You pay your money, money, go to state. Junior high kids have to go through a region. There's an east reg- reg- west region and an east region. You have to win your region to go, then you go to state competition, and then you go to national competition. They do have, in Columbus, every year in the fall and October, they have a leadership conference, which is three days. And so you take your best and brightest people that you really want and have. And so you take your best and brightest people that you really want and have desire, and you can see it, that they are gonna be the leaders. And you take them to the leadership competition. And they then learn how to run Skills USA. And Skills USA is a student organization. I put it all together, take the kids to the thing, tell them what it's all about, and then I just help. And they run it. It's them. The organization part is the students. It's not me after that point in time. Swim, sink, whatever you're gonna do, it's gonna be on you. I'm gonna be there to help you out. But they do that. They run that comp, they run the Skills US organization.
So other than Orchard, what schools around have a program in their schools?
Wow. See, Crofton has been, uh, for several years, they qualified in a national competition, high times in teamwork, which is building part of the house. Now I've already read those, is?
I'd like to quick with you as well. Not a whole lot near Northeast Nebraska. There's over, uh.
So some small schools.
Oh, yeah. Dashler, Cross County.
We have a huge advantage to small school students because of personal relationship they have with their kids, right? I could work with twenty-nine kids in the whole month of my whole high school. That's what it is. And I, I know I get to see, feel and be around leaders every day, and they, they exude that leadership in them. Hey, let's do something, let's help you out. Give you another opportunity. And big schools have a huge advantage too. When we went to a national competition, my girl stands up with her gold medal like this. She's, there's, there's eleven, you know, ten eighth graders in my whole school, right? And she's got this big old medal. There's, she's gonna compete against the eighth graders that have in their school, has thousands of eighth graders. And here she is, right there, right? So would, you know, uh, just provide opportunities. I didn't know she was gonna be a national champion, but I did know, and I do know, and I'll tell you right now, that if I didn't give her an opportunity, she never would've been a national champion. And I will tell you that if you make this happen, it'll be great. If you don't give this kid this opportunity, somebody's gonna do it. It's gonna happen, has to. I mean, our demand for kids and technical skills is so high that somebody has to do this.
Uh, Northeast, or Fred, is it Northeast? This is along those lines to start to give kids some of those CTE skills, that career tech ed skills. Uh, West Point is a new hub for, called Pathway to Tomorrow. The dozen schools are now part of that, uh, around West Point. They tried to hire Bob. Uh, and obviously, you guys can tell Bob has a vision and definitely a passion, some connections. You know, for whatever reason, that didn't work. Maybe it's fate, I don't know, but, uh, schools are looking for ways to, to give kids these experiences and these skills when they leave. I know for public schools spent millions of dollars on a, uh, career pathway wing to their building, you know. And so at, at Columbus High School's new building is phenomenal, uh, for career skills. Is somebody in Northeast Nebraska gonna be the hub like West Point is for the P two T? Don't know for sure, you know, whether if that's gonna be a fantastic future experience for them there, but they're, they're still just starting their two or three or four.
They had some business things early yet.
Um, you know, so, you know, can we be a pioneer right here? We have some things in place that certainly don't prohibit it.
And one thing that we have is, you know, thanks to you and your community. You have the brightest kids in Nebraska right here. Right? I don't know how you can turn away from that, and I know you're not turning away from that. You just, I mean, just, you know, I'm from Crofton. We have a Blue Room School, just like you have Blue Room School. Blue Room Schools are nice, and I like the awards and it's wonderful, fantastic. But when you can, when you can produce technicians from here that can stay here, it's just like, people say, well, there's too many good restaurants. There's never too many good restaurants. You ever been to town with a lot of good restaurants? What they have, a lot of people, people come there. You know, we get in the car and drive there, right? Somebody's gotta fix their car to get to the restaurant. So you can never have enough good technicians and everything.
How long have you had Skills at Orchard?
Oh, long before I was there, probably forty years. Phil Talbert had Skills there forever, as far as I can remember. Skills USA, it used to be VICA, you know, those pins says that. VICA was a hundred and fifteen years old. So Skills has been around forever.
So you think you see more of the kids in that school system stick around that area because they have the skills? Or do they still go off to the bigger city?
You know, uh, boy, uh.
That's a tough question.
It is a tough question because I'm, I'm, I'm kind of an outsider there yet, but I will tell you this in Crofton. Crofton has one of the highest percenting return to the community of anybody in Northeast Nebraska. Or anybody in the whole state of Nebraska. People come back there because they're skilled, yeah. Uh, we were just talking, the gentleman was talking right here, is that three people that he knows are now carpenters that are came back to Crofton because they were involved in Skills, went to Northeast to get their little piece of paper that says they, they got this thing, and they're there, and they're new. Yep. I mean, is there a place for skilled people to grow, live in your community? Yeah. Can you use skilled people in your community? Yeah. So if you have those things, they had to perform them, yeah. Could you have the premier automotive service technician automotive facility in the whole northern Nebraska here? Yes. People come bring their cars from Norfolk to here, from Crofton, everywhere to get their car fixed here? Yes. Yeah. Do we deal with building and construction? Definitely. How many buildings do you wanna have? Let's start building. That's important. All right, sorry. Here you go. Well, anyway. Like I said, I'm a phone call away and I appreciate your time, and I'm gonna run to Crofton and be a school board president. Thank you very much. Any questions right now? Thank you.
Okay, number ten, school.
Okay, I had a request, a board member had a, you know, conversation, well, we visited about a little bit last week, last month. So, um, talked to our, uh, our gals in the kitchen about, um, yeah, as you do any time, New Year's starting, is there anything we're gonna do different? Uh, stop doing something, start doing something, and so on. Uh, as I shared with you, you know, there's been a few changes that we've made, a few things that we've relaxed. With the primary, one of the primary concerns being, you know, do our littlest ones have access to fresh fruits and vegetables? And they have always had, uh, a veggie tray that's provided by an adult, because all of that needs to be with the, you know, adult support. Once they get to the fourth grade, they just, they, they go, obviously go through and help themselves. So, um, we are gonna start providing a, a couple lettuce with dressing, uh, so they'll have an opportunity for a salad. Uh, the veggie tray will be, will also provide, you know, they oftentimes have tomatoes or things that can be part of that as well. Um, so we're gonna, uh, provide that for kids. For the youngest ones, we're also gonna provide seasoning at the end of the serving line. Uh, not at tables, uh, not individually, uh, but kids will be able to, kids, all kids, that the littlest ones will have adult, only with, only adult help, will get some seasoning. So what I needed to be educated about a little bit by Mary was the, the food, the commodities that we get. Do those already come with the proper sodium and seasoning, and they do. I didn't know that they didn't add a half a cup to the vat for this, that, or the other thing, or, or on the spring, whatever. So we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and do that. Not, you know, incredibly clear, it's not to me, that, uh, you know, what position that might put us in, but I'm not worried about that. If we, if somebody with authority says stop doing that, we'll stop doing it. But no school cafeteria has ever been shut down, ever. So I'm not worried about it. But we're gonna provide seasoning at the end of the serving line for kids that wanna put something in their green beans or their cooked carrots or their potatoes. Okay, so those will be a couple of things that the kids will notice, particularly the older ones that will say, you know what, we really appreciate that. That'll, that'll help. The idea of a youth-sized salad bar, you know, I visited with a couple of other people, visited with, it's just not practical, to be honest. To fit it in there and have somebody manage that with kids, uh, just not practical. But so we thought we could serve, we thought we could, uh, meet the reasonable request of, we wanna make sure those kids get fresh fruit and vegetable opportunities as well. And it'd be nice if they could have an opportunity for a, for a lettuce salad or dressing. We're gonna do that.
They'll be free made.
Yes.
You know, some with ranch and some with ranch.
That's what I understand. And so it'll be, you know, for kids to, oh, what's that one? What's the orange one? What's the white one? Most of them want ranch, you know, they'll find out and it'll take, just like the, the lunch line, the first week of school is a mess. It's slow and it's, you know, uh, until they get back in that routine. So this will be a new thing for kids. Teachers will prepare them a little bit. Uh, they'll maybe do a practice run, whatever. I mean, I don't know, but initially they'll be like, ooh, hey, let me try that one, let me try, you know, whatever. That'll just be part of it. That'll just be part of it.
The preparer will be there and they can help them with that. Can we have a fresh, especially since fruits in season, watermelon for these little kids or strawberries?
Yes, we've, uh, we've had some of that in the past. I mean, it's not been a daily thing, obviously, or even an in-season daily thing. And, and so you're right. Uh, but they, I, I, I couldn't agree more, though. They should have, uh, for the most part, the same opportunities for nutrition as the older kids. The salads that the gals might make from the leftover chicken nuggets, and there's a beautiful taco chicken salad or something that's wrapped up that doesn't, not wrapping it. We're not gonna open that up to the little kids. But we, they do have a, where they can come by and they can pick up an apple, they can pick up a banana. And a lot of times kids will pick those up.
I've almost said apples and, because I thought maybe you just cut an apple, a banana in half, you know, for these little kids. And if they go eat, take it down to the kindergarten room for their afternoon snack or something, whatever.
A lot of times kids will take it so they meet the requirements and then they, and they will, no, is that fifty percent of the kids? No. But it, sometimes it, yeah, it's not, if you're standing by there, and I do quite often, and I see what goes in the, yeah, it's a little disheartening, like, wait, you know, don't, don't throw that away. And they'll make some attempts to save them, but I don't know if they should, once it's been on their tray and they've, you know, you know, unless it's a banana. Kids will eat a, uh, they'll eat a, a, a cord apple more so that if you put three slices on them, they're funny. You know, and I, and I asked about that, not just this last week, but a year or so ago, and, and from what I understood, understand, we've tried that to core apples and provide apple slices. Can't remember if it just, you know, in, in an hour in the brown or whatever, or just somebody right there doing those kind of can. So I can't remember for sure why that wasn't a, a practical way. Kids aren't used to just biting into an apple and someone can.
Grapes. I mean, there's a abundance of fruit out there that I don't see these kids getting.
I'm surprised they don't package, you know, like McDonald's. You can get apples and stuff, just prepackaged.
Prepackaged apples would be fine.
I'm surprised that's not part of the government ration.
Yeah.
But I can answer that. But, uh, so we'll, we'll make another step, I think, you know, sometimes it's better to make several small steps maybe than just overall, but.
Prepackaged, it'd cost you more, but if the kids that are only, that are taking it are the ones that are gonna eat it, in the long run, it does it cost you more. You know, if it's prepackaged and nobody eats it today, it'll be hard to eat it tomorrow, you know?
My daughter loves the, the peeled apple slices in a, in a Happy Meal. Uh, those would be a huge, I don't know if they're available from commodities or from wherever you might find it. I don't know.
Costco.
But I'll check.
Yeah, I just think, you know, yeah, let's start small. You guys can do it next time. Because I would like to see more, I'd like to see some homemade meals, you know, homemade bread once a month to start out.
You're talking about how many bread you eat pounds? You don't eat a loaf of bread, do you?
Well, you know, whatever.
Because I always thought kids hated homemade loaf of bread.
Some, some, just like anything, some kids would flip over it and some would.
I mean, I can see the bombs, but I guess.
Or homemade cookie now and then, or actual frosting on the cinnamon roll.
Really?
I don't wanna scare Ron.
Okay, are we done with that? Number eleven, procedure for appointing applicant to vacancy to the Board of Education.
Hey, included, uh, this policy in this packet, so you, just wanted to see if there are any questions about the procedure we need to follow as per policy two oh one point oh six. We have two applicants to fill the seat vacated by Jan Kraus. Uh, we've been through this process before. We've been on board since January of seventeen. So you'll each get a, an application from, from each candidate. You have a score sheet with those two names in the packet. You score them one and two. You sign your name, send your tally, your score sheet to Board President. He'll tally those.
Does that use us to tally them?
Yes, that's what's used to tally. He'll tally them with, with, uh, Mr. Ashburn.
He's got a list of this one.
Lowest.
But I've got another one.
Lowest number would be your choice, your appointment. Okay, do you have any, any questions about how that will go when we get to action thirteen?
And then when I tally them, I just announce the winner. There's no score. I don't announce any.
Don't announce any scores. Your score sheets will come back to me and we'll shred those.
Do we just see the applications?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, so that takes care of that. Number twelve is negotiations. All right, we met with the negotiation committee before this meeting about the AD salary. I don't know if you wanna, does everybody know what's happened already? I mean, we already have a contract.
Well, it's work agreement. Uh, it's really an at-will position. It's not a certified position.
Right.
But we do have, we have a signed agreement.
Right.
For a wage.
Other than wage, yes. And that amount was.
Is that about six hundred?
So they came in and suggested their price was, they wanted eleven thousand two eighty-four, the negotiation committee.
That was their first?
That was their first, what they asked for. And by the time we left, they were final, they would be okay with this, ninety-seven forty-five, nine thousand seven forty-five. And what they're saying was, uh, kind of based on the time that we give our AD to do his job, it's just one period. Or a lot of schools will get two periods, and we can add in the value of that second period. Kind of amazing how much that adds up to the teacher's salary. And that's kinda how they came up with the eleven thousand part of it.
Well, they were, yeah, on their pyramid, they wanted C and F, right? Because if we change, let's say, after three years, Robin quits doing it, it doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna be that number, your own experience.
Every time we switch over in that position, because that position's held by an elementary teacher, a high school teacher, an administrator, uh, the amount of planned time you can, uh, provide for a high school teacher is different than what you can provide for an elementary teacher. And so there are just so many factors going into it, which make this a complicated classified position to, not, it could be a certified position if you've got an administrator hold. So it, it, it's kind of tough. We calculated that, that, uh, Corey had about one point five hours a day for AD time. Maybe that was total planned time, but, because that seems like a lot. But, uh, we, per, per average, uh, average, you know, Robin, because we, we couldn't give him an additional planned period because the schedule dictated, we had to have two sections of this, this and this. So that's six of his, of the eight periods. So he has two periods, two student-free periods. Okay, one is his traditional academic planned period, the other would be AD time. So, you know, I, I don't necessarily see that, you know, I, I see it as, as any, uh, what are our periods now, Mr. Novick? Forty-eight minutes, whatever. I see it as forty-eight times two as a block. I mean, I see it as a block of time to plan for classes, to plan for AD, and you just manage your time. That, that, anyway, that's a conversation we had with Mr. Reed, that I had with Mr. Reed. And, uh, he did, he did ask me about, you know, supervision, activity supervision. And that away contests, you know, ask, do I need to go to every away event? And like, heck no, Mr. Novick and I are both pretty visible. You know, we, we'll, we'll get a calendar out and we'll determine who's going to this away event on this night and this away event, and he'll have a share of those. Corey was pretty good about being at every doggone thing. Corey was pretty good about being at every doggone thing. Uh, and so that, that, you know, provided was just something that we wanted to say, well, you know, can we kind of split some of that time? But again, that, that'll be a hard thing to calculate and say, well, okay, Corey put in this amount of time, we paid him X. Robin is gonna put in this amount of time, we'll pay him Y. It's just hard to determine.
Yeah, facts to it. And we're trying to just put something in, in paper that we don't have to renegotiate every time we change A D. It'll be set in stone, and that's just a way to be, you know, other than there'll be a little bit with time, amount of time they get during the class day, but as far as the pay scale goes, that'll be on that, go on that chart. Salary. So basically, you know, we had the seventy-six ninety-four, they started out the eleven tw- eleven thousand two eighty-four, and we're, we're kinda right in the middle of that right now.
Yeah, they went to what, column D and F?
Moved over a column right, which dropped from eleven twenty-four to nine seven four five.
Any other benefits?
No, that's all I asked for.
We wanted to throw that five hundred dollars. I don't know if you have that anywhere else. Just negotiations. Gone.
So, monkey, that is clear.
Yep. So we didn't agree on anything. We said we were gonna bring it to the board first. If we think that's fair enough, Doc Garl will be the holder of our chair. He is, you know, when you look at the array, you think, well, he's clear up at the top by his salary, but then when you start figuring in the planning time, that's something that lets you have to get another whole period. We figure that, cause what's the value of that period is? It gets, it gets it up there for fast. Or he's not getting that extra period.
It just depends, you know, how much Mr. Yolke can help him too. I mean, if he would be an asset to him, then he'd be able to help him.
Yeah, and, um, you know, obviously during, uh, Mr. Yolke's, uh, junior high sports period, when he's not coaching junior high sports, we, we obviously have, it can, can have and expect Adam to spend some time in the room.
What does he coach?
Uh, he'll do football, basketball. So, yeah, that'll be the two, the busiest time of years, his first two third seasons, actually, but, uh...
Yeah. It's not a real long.
But those junior high sports are also not as long, yes. So, you know, a- and, and we're not gonna say, Adam, we need you to be up here, you know, for the basketball games on it. But we kinda hope, well, and of course he's a basketball coach, but, you know, just that, well, we'll kinda see what the procedures are to prepare for this event. Volleyball game will be more realistic. You know, so I don't think we should probably consider, you know, that, uh...
Well, if he's doing that much, he should get somewhere, Robin's, if he's done somewhere, Robin's working, he should get somewhere, Robin's working, you know?
I'll lower that heat.
Yeah, I know.
But he doesn't, then he won't get the stipend, so...
Right.
We're actually talking fifteen, ninety dollars more.
Yeah, cause if they have the five hundred dollars.
Or five hundred or the thousand, I mean, talking about like...
Yeah, right.
They had eighty-three hundred before.
Right.
Be about eleven hundred if it's above.
Right.
If we were gonna give him five and five.
Personally, I wouldn't, would not do the job for that. There's no way I would do the job. I'd rather be a coach for three months and, and get that pay than, than do this all year and not getting more than that.
And how much was Corey getting?
Corey was, uh, was just under seven, or just around seven.
But it all goes back to that he had double the time.
Right.
That much.
Yeah, and, and I, there, there's no, there's no question in my mind that Mr. Reed, uh, won't earn, he'll do a good job. Well, yeah, yeah.
And he's got maybe eighty years of experience in doing this. So are we all okay with that, to be of approval of that, or is anybody differently? Or have an idea of, of the counter?
I'd say it's tough because they're gonna be pacing.
Cause all our figures are set in stone. It's hard to count.
Yeah.
Depending on who it is, it varies.
I don't think we'll be out of line. I mean, when I came in, I thought we'd be way out of line, we could get rid of that, but after hearing the differences, well, I don't know that we are. Cause we're asking a lot of him besides being A D.
Cause he's got so many classes to teach.
Yeah, he's gonna do a lot of things on time, so...
Yeah.
So unless anybody has an objection to that, well, can Dr. Earl do okay to set it up that way? It'll be all right.
Yes.
D and F.
D and F. Yep.
So now, if that would change, let's say he isn't, they still use pay scale D and F?
No, I would say
No?
Discuss that specifically when any, with, if we ever have any change in not administering A D.
Okay.
If it's administrative, that's negotiated through the board.
Right. So we're gonna consult every time?
If we have, if we have a different teacher taking the position, we've gotta look at the time we're able to give them.
Okay.
So the, the line that is on the bottom of the extra duty, the asterisk, that should probably state that, that's probably appropriate language, which protects both sides.
All right. Average items for thirteen, rate and score applicants according to Board of Education policy number two oh one point zero six.
Hey, we had two completed applications prior to the deadline, one from Gary Shea and one from Trent Tar.
No, no, we're okay. We're okay. People who are sitting low, we're sitting up fairly high. In fact, our trailer's almost three feet above flood stage. So, um, yeah. And they are kinda at flowing like sixty thousand cubic feet per minute. We've actually done, they've gone up to like, years ago, seventy thousand, and we still were okay. So we've got a little bit left. There's probably about... But, uh, J J and family spent a week up there last week.
Without me, could they see?
Yeah. But we went up Friday, we got in kayak for the first time, like kayak gear.
Got you doing it?
No, I could, I could get in, out of it. Kids, they tipped hers over and it was here in the water like this.
There were five questions, correct?
I do.
And Gary just didn't answer five?
I just want you to know, you're missed, you're defeated. She comes up to her mom's kids and the relations and the manner from Monday morning. I just want you to know, you're appreciated. It's Janelle. And she was doing so sweet. Always does do so sweet. She makes Sandra cry all the time. Anytime Sandra gets close to her, she just cries.
Oh, and you're ready, go ahead and destroy her.
Well, hopefully she comes to the man who's in this.
Was she?
Yeah, yeah.
Their application. Because I hear she flushed five, then she's shaking.
I had to keep the drink out, it wasn't, you know, because we just, we never had a perfect, we pulled it first step. The drinks, um... She was kinda like, we wanted. She didn't want to, like, I mean, step, um, just move, kind of rectify itself.
Can't have a tie.
Right.
Miss was really... You gotta stay on.
That's terrible.
So much stuff for the side of ours. He does, he's staying here. And then, and then Dale was in the, in church for yesterday. What he started out, he goes Dale, and he goes down the bullet, and that's... But he can say, I say, this is Dale, this is a brain damage, and so he goes, oh, and so he had to drive, and he was, Dale. He'd be ready, he's, oh, he's gonna, he'll get, possibly, and he's Dale.
Some math, I was trying to get there. I can do that.
I think you're left ten hours.
Yeah. If it's better, I'll help, let it go, please. I have it, not here, I just wanna make sure. Same numbers, same numbers. Now we gotta throw both those papers away, hope it's there. Not particularly. It's all right. I'll get thrown away after my meeting. All right, first of all, I'd like to thank both candidates. I don't think Gary is here. Sounds like we got two pretty good candidates by their applications. I appreciate you both for putting your name in the hat and giving us a selection. And the winner is Trent Tar. Congratulations. The first word's out of your mouth.
I told him to run before it was like, it was...
So, congratulations and welcome to the board. Can we have a seat for you?
I don't know.
Keep telling him.
Keep telling him, yeah. I got that, yeah?
Yep. Uh, we will after. Yes. Yes. So... On, on action, having fourteen, then we'll read a, we'll take a motion and approval to accept the result of the vote.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Trent Tar to fill the vacant lady for the School Board of Education seat through the twenty twenty election.
On second?
Okay, number thirteen, uh... Fourteen, or is it four? Okay. Okay, it's been first and second. Uh, Vicky?
Yes.
Mike? Myself, yes, Jason?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Motion carries. You're officially in.
After.
After the oath.
But I did notice on the oath, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. South, I'll let you get to the...
Yep, go ahead.
Um, it, it's just, it probably semantics, but I noticed on policy two oh one oh four, it just says each newly elected school board member shall be given the following oath of office. Well, Trenton was elected, he's been appointed, so we just want to go ahead and add, or appointed, in there, so on your number sixteen in your packet, it should indicate that language, that I ask you to quite simply revise this policy.
I'll make a motion that we accept Board of Policy, Board of Education Policy two oh one point oh four is revised. I'll second.
Shoot the second. Uh, myself, yes, Jason?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Okay. Sixteen, administer the oath of office.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you'd like to handle it, Mr. South, if you just want Trent to read that?
Yeah, just stand and read that.
Yeah, I've been able to prepare, sorry.
So must have been a hall of memorizing, come back in.
It's just right here, you have that whole doggone thing.
We should revise that for sure.
I, Trent Tar, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies sworn in domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the saying that I take this obligation free and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion, that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties of the office of the Pliny New School District Board of Education according to Oma, and to the best of my ability, and I do further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force of violence, and that I during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force of violence, so help me God.
He's official.
You should give everybody an oath before they run.
This is not going to work.
All right, here we are on number seventeen. First one, there's two sets, basically, there's the agenda on the front, and if you look at the two next pages, it kind of goes through step by step, each one. We're actually on the third page, first one, I think.
Number seven.
Number seventeen. So. Discuss to take possible action on Board of Education sponsorship of teammates mentoring.
Darren did keep it short, so it's going to be short. Just want to thank you for your past support of our program and, and appreciate the continued support because it's a great program. I just made a list of all the mentors that we had this last year, and we had like thirty-three of them, and a couple of them mentored two different people, so we had like thirty-five matches. I mean, it's a fantastic bunch of people and fantastic bunch of students that we have, and there's just a lot of neat things going on in school. So, we so appreciate your, your past support and your support is coming.
So you pretty much have all the kids covered that you'd like to have?
We always need them. We just done application for another new one, and we got a new one and another new mentor in the wings. We, we've always done kids that way.
Sure.
So, it's, it's, it's an ongoing thing, so you'll notice there, there's just a bunch of neat people there, like, they've been, give up their time every way to come in and mentor these kids, so it's, it's a fantastic thing. The only other thing that I was going to say that, um, this is our fifteenth year, and so I'm stepping down as coordinator. Casey and I are going to change jobs, I'm going to be board president, and she's going to be the new coordinator, so it'll, I'm sure the program will keep going and probably get a whole lot better now. Anyway, I know she has something to say, but thank you.
Well, this is the new coordinator, I'd like to acknowledge Dan since fourteen years. The program is doing great, so I hope to be able to do her, her service justice. She'll do great.
The attorney was touched a lot of lives, more than we know. Okay, number eighteen.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought that was the next one. Nope, that's all part of this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of five hundred dollars to support the teammates mentoring program.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, number eighteen, discuss to take possible action on NRCSA membership for two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year.
It's, uh, the third year I'm asking you to join, uh, NRCSA. Again, it's, it's the Nebraska Rural Council of School Administrators, uh, so you'll provide a, you know, a lot of support, uh, networking and so on, uh, through NRCSA, uh, under new leadership for the first time in, in many, many years, Superintendent Jack Moles from, uh, Johnson County Central is, is taking over, and he is a, uh, uh, albeit at the, towards the end of his career in education, uh, the folks in NRCSA are, are pretty doggone excited to be, you know, under his leadership. So, I, as I'm talking with, I think it's eight hundred and fifty dollars is the membership for it, but, uh, it's good stuff, put on a great annual convention as well, but it's, it's, uh, in Nebraska, obviously, you know, overwhelming majority of the two hundred and forty-four school districts are considered rural school districts. So it's, uh, a majority of the school districts our size, you know, belong to NRCSA, and, um, support each other and, uh, help promote education in rural areas.
I'll make a motion that we renew Pliny New Public Schools' membership with the NRCSA for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
I'll second. First and second, and Mike?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Jason? Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, reports, Activity Director's report.
Just to speak quickly for Robin, who attended Sioux Falls tonight, uh, he, he did come in at a time where the calendar is just a real, there are three, three things. Uh, the new two-year cycle for football, which meant new schedules, new teams, new officials, uh, that mixed in with, it's the rollback year for NSAA next year. That mixed in with they moved the state volleyball, or they moved, uh, volleyball season up a week, including the state tournament. And so, uh, this, the calendars were shifting, and there was confusion statewide on, well, because usually they just roll over contracts. We're going to be week thirty-three of the NSAA calendar on Thursday, that's when we always play Randolph. Well, they, they shifted, they kept, two calendars shifted, and they didn't know whether they shifted this way, or that way, or that way, and ADs were doing all kinds of different things. So, he spent a tremendous amount of time, he had an AD meeting, he said, he called ADs in our conferences, we got to get together, we're trying to do this by a text, an email over the summer. Let's all get together, by gosh, he hosted an AD meeting here, showing some great leadership. Uh, so, we do though, have a couple of unfortunate problems and conflicts with, uh, our schedule. This year, we play football, volleyball on the same night, twice, uh, away. Girls go away, boys go away. Uh, it's a, it's a official availability thing, and football is a, is a big problem statewide. So you have from Thursday to Saturday to play your football game that week, Thursday to Saturday. You play it Thursday afternoon, Thursday night, Friday afternoon, Friday night, Saturday, and obviously Friday night is optimal, there's not enough officials. We have several Thursday night games, we have a couple of afternoon games.
In football.
In football. Uh, he also found that next year, we were playing whole volleyball, whole football on the same night. Uh, and he's got, and he fixed that, and he spent a lot of time fixing that. Uh, now, we couldn't move the volleyball because there were volleyball tournaments, where it wasn't just one other team, it was, oh, it's Pierce County Tournament, we're hosting it, it's played, right? Uh, so volleyball won, that, that date, had to stay that date, so we had to, so we had to move to, had to move football games to a couple of afternoons, so we got to work with another school. If they willing to move to an afternoon, get out of school early and travel, just a complicated mess. Uh, and he's cleaned it up as good as it could be done. So that was just one of the things that he had to deal with this summer, then, you know, all the other, rest of the normal stuff. But he came in when all those things happened, the two-year cycle, the shift of the calendar, for the whole NSAA rollback and the volleyball, uh, shift, so, uh, we're in good hands.
So was he able to get, when they're same night this year, different directions, be it one a little earlier, or a little, you know, obviously you can't move football back. Are you going to get the volleyball a little sooner, so, we just want to get back?
We, 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 we looked at that, and just, it was, it was easier to move the football to a Friday afternoon off of Thursday night volleyball.
And just so you understand, the football official thing, this really isn't Cory's fault, because Cory doesn't call an official. Play got high, and Airheart, and somebody else called. And you have approximately four minutes to get all your officials for two years. You, we're all calling different people, you book them for two weeks. And two of those people, I think both of those games, we had somebody else contracted, we had them contracted, and they said, oh, wait, we already contracted somebody else. You know, can you move this? And, and you're out there, they can call, you really are, it's tough. And that's kind of how that happens.
Yeah, and I don't think any, yeah, nobody's saying, well, why, how do we get into this, whose fault is it? That's a relevant sense, not a moot point, it's not anything to discuss, but, uh, but just anytime you have any kind of transition, you know, somebody's going to come in and have to, you know, pick up and, you know, move forward, and you have to, you have to look into two thousand and nineteen, and, oh, okay, we better get on this now, you know, because we've got an, an issue, you know. So, um, so we're in good hands, got the jamboree coming up on Thursday, which is, uh, you know, the volleyball scrimmage, which we've had with Osmond back and forth for three years, I think. And that'll, that'll kick off a busy, that'll kick off the, your usual high school sports.
There is no football scrimmage.
Football? Football, I'm sure.
Are these numbers accurate?
Why do you have to number?
If, they're accurate as of when? Do you provide it for you? Yeah.
Fifteen for football?
Yeah, they all show up.
I heard it's been cracked twelve.
Yep.
Well, either I get ten.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we're going to have to weather something pretty seriously, we're going to be healthy, and we, we, schools, schools our size have started a season like this, and have had, uh, uh, forfeit games as the year goes based on injuries and eligibility, we're precarious.
So do they have any JV games playing?
No.
No, okay, that's, that's good, you know, what, you know, somebody getting hurt in JV game, that's good, but, yeah, right, those young kids have to play more.
So I don't think there's any, like, so scrimmage, or whatever they do after.
Yeah, they're going to do whatever they have to do, make sure they stay healthy, stay out of, risk, unnecessary risk.
We have forty-five total kids out for, you know, for sports.
We do, our, the senior class is our smallest class in the school, so we look forward to the twenty-six first graders, you know. God willing, they stay the same as well, you know, and so.
Right.
At least we're not looking at darker clouds on the horizon.
We knew this was kind of like.
Yeah, we just got to get through this stretch.
You're going to try and get, make this not happen, so. So is there more new, new rules coming down the pipe on football as far as tackling practices and stuff? There's a few years back, they made a lot of changes.
I'm not aware of, of any limiting, uh, competitive practice in contact, not aware of that.
Okay, principals report.
Floods days are done for another year. I don't know what those are, I mean, the teachers just come in for one day out of that hole last week, and.
They get paid for one of the five days that are in.
Really fun, as it comes out, we're too often. Summer school, okay, so I was going to give you some information about summer school, some things that I shared with parents during orientation as well. Uh, as far as sending letters after we did this, we kind of met and talked about some things that we would like to fix. As far as when we had it, I think that went quite well. After first semester, I'll be sending letters home to parents of the kids that failed first semester classes, so we didn't give them a whole lot of time this year to plan, they knew their kids had to be in summer school, but we didn't really, I didn't communicate that very well, other than a letter I sent, it said, you have three days to sign your kid up. So, at Christmas time, I will go through and figure out, hopefully there won't be any, uh, but let them know. I need to, sorry, uh, who has to take summer school. And then, prior to the semester being over, about a month out, we'll send another reminder saying they're on schedule here to take summer school, so they need to pass. And then, uh, we talked about the teachers that kind of sponsored this. We had Chad Schumacher, Robin Reed, and Michelle Lozle. So, we had somebody from one of the core areas, Robin can kind of cover the math and the, and the science both, because we're not talking sophisticated math, it's not like the calculus kid is in there. Uh, these are pretty much junior high to half kids. And so, when Mr. Reed is in there, they need to work on their science, and they need to work on their math especially. We set it up, so when the junior high came in, every junior high kid's there because they didn't do their work. They just had numerous zeros, they just claimed would not do their work, and I don't, I don't have the magic wand to fix that. You know, you call home, you make them sit here for advantage, you have them come in before school and work, I mean, Mr. Schumacher's here at seven fifteen making those kids, they just would not do it. So, we went through the gradebook, I listed everything that they took a zero on, or got below of fifty-five percent, I think I picked. And they had to redo all of that, because I didn't really understand why we're going to recreate all these things that they didn't do in the first place. And they all passed but one, because he again wouldn't do summer school stuff. Was in contact with mom twice a week about it, blah, blah. And high school, same way, any kid that was in there, they failed, but they went to Apex. So, we need to jump on it early and see who wants to, to, to be the summer school people, because I think we need to have it again. I, I, we had some kids that got credit recovery done, and they will not be repeating in high school, which is a good thing, because if they don't pass on time and graduate, it's not a good thing, most of the time they don't come back. So, I, I think that's the route, that they'll go and get trained in Apex as well, and I think it'll probably be the same three, because it wasn't a horrible experience. They were here for three hours, I think, we did three hours for three weeks, four days a week. And so when they finished, say, one kid was only failing one class, when they had all their stuff done for credit recovery, they were done and could go home. I mean, I'm not going to keep them here for three weeks or four weeks if they don't, don't have a reason to be here. So I, I like the way that worked, but I think I need to communicate that with parents and get that information out to them a little sooner.
So did everyone come that was supposed to?
Um, no. And that's the other thing, we're going to be sticklers about, when you are here, you are here till you are finished. If you just ditch us one day in the middle, because we had a kid that missed three days, and he just kind of kept coming back whenever he felt like it. You know what, the option is off the table, you'll just repeat those classes. They weren't fun the first time, they're not going to be fun the second time. That was my philosophy when I taught government. You don't like it now, you're not going to like it the second time. Right, Drew? So, um, and, and I think with those new policies, or those new, you know, communication skills and those kinds of things with the parents, I think it'll go a little smoother. But otherwise, we only have, I think, one that didn't show up at all. It's not bad.
That was signed up, or that?
Um, they, they never signed up, because we got a call from mom, and said she didn't want to do it.
That's pretty interesting.
I, yeah, I, I was actually happy, we had a lot of kids get out of things that, you know, one didn't make it, and so out of the nine kids that were there, seven of them did what they needed to do. So I'm hoping this year we don't have to have nine kids, but, you know. So, that's what I know about that. All right, when I, uh, wrote this last week, textbooks were still not even, Kelly, did they come today? I think we have some science things for the elementary, uh, not all of that stuff is here yet, ordering textbooks is horrible, horrible. Uh, I ordered Dean's textbooks for geometry, May fifteenth, and I called twice, the order was canceled both times by someone in the office, so that it could be deferred to a rep who never contacted me. So, those are here, some elementary science things are here, um, no social studies yet, but elementary. Unless it came today, and we just didn't see it, but usually.
Do you have any options when it comes to order books, this company or that?
Yeah, there's about three textbook companies now, it used to be about ten.
And they all make the same book?
Yeah, pretty much. Um, textbooks will be obsolete, I'll be retired by then, but, um, in ten years, you won't be able to get textbooks. Textbooks will be obsolete, I'll be retired by then, but in ten years, you won't be able to get textbooks. Because they're already weaning my, my elementary science people away from textbooks. They're just a kind of a soft covered book that they're gonna have to just store in the room and not let kids take home. Because they don't make them anymore and everything is online, you can't buy teacher resources anymore. They send you a code and you have to log on, so hopefully they don't, you know, they're gonna have to get used to doing everything with code. And that's what we have for science, so. Find out if the rest of them are here. Uh, summer workshops, lower elementary and the title teacher went to early intervention reading. It is a program that, um, I will chat with Dr. Arnold now that things will settle down here a little bit when we get up and running. Um, it's about a forty-six hundred dollar, uh, program, but it's a K six. And our problem is, is we have a lot of stuff over there and stuff, it's, it's good stuff, but nobody ever, we, we bought, not when I was here. We had stepping stones, we have, I don't know what else.
Cape house.
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff, but then it's kind of like when you get to second grade, everybody assumes you can read and read well if you're at grade level. There's nothing for upper elementary and this goes into corrective reading for elementary, upper grades. And Deb looked into it and it's about forty-six hundred dollars across the board.
So it goes from grade to grade and continues, there's a stepping stone for it.
But it goes through sixth grade and I'm not so sure that we couldn't use it in seventh grade too, because you know what, they come across the street, they just don't magically get fixed. So they don't really qualify for spent services, but they do struggle. And so I think this would be a good option for us. And then those people that might could come back and, and train our teachers. Where'd you go, Neely, did you go to Neely?
Oh, no, we went to North Fork.
Somebody went to Neely.
It would really help us put us all on the same page.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's placement tests, so kids can be at different places, so.
And we have people that pop in all the time. I mean, we're gonna enroll our kids today, we have no idea where they are. Um, I just think this would be a, a good option for us and, and I like it that it goes through sixth grade. Because we have nothing that goes through sixth grade. And then, um, all the paras went to the ESU for a training, which I love. It's parrot camp is what they call it. And then when we do PD time on Wednesdays, the first Wednesday of the month, they all organize and they have, I mean, they have a great little party and they bring snacks, they have more fun than we do. And they watch the Zoom meeting, because our ESU does, we're on Wednesday. So they do this Zoom meeting on Tuesday and it lasts about an hour, but we don't take time out of the day because the next day is when we all get out, so then they stick around for one hour and, and they watch whatever the topic is that relates to paras. So it works out well for us. Um, national convention, I haven't, I put these on the table. And these are just some of my notes. It was absolutely fabulous, I love going, uh, I get lots of great ideas. Uh, probably the one in here on, on classroom management. We deal with a lot of kids that become kind of difficult in a classroom, you know. Today we went to the speaker and, and he, he has all these kids in his class, he's from San Diego and he has all these kids in his class that get kicked out of everybody else's class. They're, you know, fairly intelligent kids, but they get kicked out of AP, they get kicked out of this. And then we sit all of those kids in one room and you have to try and teach them. So this person talked about, um, how you can have five hundred rules if you want, but if people don't follow them consistently, so it's something we're gonna work on at the high school, I think more so than the elementary. Uh, I think it's a high school issue where they transfer to so many different teachers. And maybe four, five, and six, but it's, I just don't see it being an elementary thing. Um, it's, it's a secondary thing where, well, our rule states that you're not supposed to have food in the classroom, but on any given day, you know, and I don't care about one granola bar, I'm talking like bags of chips and, you know, all kinds of things spread out all over the table, and I've seen that. And so, you know, we have to be consistent for our kids so that when they go to one classroom, it's not confusion when they go somewhere, even though they know better. How many of us don't, as adults, don't try to get away with something? Well, this guy's gonna let me get away with it, so maybe I'll let it slide. So this lady was very good, and if we ever have enough money to bring her, I would love to. This Adolf Brown that I mentioned in the board report, he was a keynote and our teachers are gonna see him in January. Like today, you know, Dr. Arnold and I can go to all these wonderful conventions and workshops and all of these things, but the teachers don't get to go. They can go for me, I don't care, um, if you wanna let them go, but probably not. So when they get to hear the same stuff we do, it, it has a lot more impact. So this guy, his message was more about, uh, you never know what you're gonna get. He's got, you know, the two backpack rule that, you know, dig inside that backpack and dig out the other backpack that really tells you about this kid. And he's gonna be in Norfolk when we go. And he shows up and some guy's dancing on the stage and you don't know that it's him. And I was sitting on the end and this lady was playing on her phone and he gets right in her face and she doesn't even know it, he's looking right at her. He's got hair that sticks straight up and it's kind of twisted and, and he's got these baggy clothes on in a backpack. You have no idea that it's him if you didn't do your homework before you got here. So people are kind of looking at him like, who is this clown? Well, after the other guy gets done doing his spiel up on the stage, he comes up and, and he talks about being the stinky kid. He was in second grade and the impact that teachers have on kids is what, what his message was, that he was in second grade and they were poor, poor, poor. Dad left them, and that's what most of these speakers are, is they come from a really crappy household. And he managed to survive this whole situation and, and he was in line to high five. The teacher would high five all the kids and she would pull her hand back when she got to him, because he was the stinky kid and she wouldn't touch him and talk to him and, you know. That, that's pretty awful, because I know some of the kids we get here and they just, they'll bring you whatever they have. You know, this is the last thing that they might have to eat at their house, but you have to take it anyway. Even though you know you shouldn't, because they might not have anything, but they wanna give it to you. So he was, he was amazing and I think our teachers are really gonna love him. Because anybody that got up to walk out during the session, go to the bathroom, he plays this song about leaving or whatever and he just kind of embarrasses you if you, if you don't run fast enough. And then there was a, a few more, um, the, the first one on this list that I gave you was, um, he was a keynote. He, I don't know, I, he wasn't that impactful on me, I guess, I don't know, I listened, but. Um, building a school climate and I, these are just the notes that I took on my, um, iPad when I was there. Um, so I liked this one, what did you do at school today? The, the person that led this said, my kid is six years old. When he comes home from school and I ask him, what'd you do today? I'm expecting a six-year-old to tell me. So I have some things that I wanna do with the elementary, um, like create their, a classroom Twitter account and they can just take pictures and send it. Um, there's some, but we need to get school up and running before I can show them this stuff. There was one that, um, it identifies the kid's face in the picture. It has some face recognition and it'll automatically kick an email out to teacher or to the parents and say, so they're not getting all of the pictures from the class and the teacher just has to send one mass email and it'll recognize, um, the kids in the picture and, and go through that. I think that would be good for our elementary, because they love to post that stuff. And you just have to be very careful posting all kinds of things out there. So I, do you have any more questions for me? I have more notes if you want right here, but I wasn't sure how excited you were to. After.
President, happy you made it back from Chicago with all the activity that's going on out there.
Well, the clouds were rolling in and they were giving us all these text messages about, well, here's what you can do, you can delay your trip by, by one day and take a, a voucher. Uh, I said, told Tom, we're out of here, we are going home today. That was long enough to be there. Yeah, and we stayed in a, um, in the area, this convention center was huge. I asked three different people how to get there, go left and go two blocks, it was across the street. But this thing was so massive that it took up like three full blocks. You need to go, I was at a Nike seminar, um, something about selling real estate for old people. So.
It's when you, not while your phone's ringing and you walk out.
The Nike one was okay, that was just to see where I was supposed to go. So finally I figured it out and it was just simply about the street.
You're probably calling grandparents for money for their grandkids, they didn't even know it.
Yeah, it was kind of fun. So thank you for that opportunity to go.
All right, thank you. Next one's president's report and I don't really have much. I just wanna thank you three guys that are here with your names on the list that, you know, it's not an option. You're gonna be up here soon enough. I would thank you for coming with this Watson Building thing and this Skills USA. You know, I think that's something we may or may not do anything with, but, you know, you put time in so you're in on the ground floor, so when you get here, we can just keep rolling with it, so. I appreciate it, you know, we'll try and let you know whenever we have anything on the agenda at a meeting, so. You aren't coming if there's nothing on here and you don't miss any news areas, but, uh, you know, there's some great opportunities with it, but we'll just have to play it out and see, see whether it fits or not, so. That's all I have, so, Dr. O, if you want to.
Okay, most important thing we do is hire people to be part of our staff and, and we're, we're now fully staffed, uh, certified and classified, we hired three Westrooms. Uh, two of them are graduates, uh, plain to love hiring alone, that are qualified and fill our needs. Um, and you guys knew that we were looking at Bill Westroom, I think, to come and, and provide, uh, maintenance, you know, assistance, custodial duties. Uh, his wife Tracy Stelling-Westroom is still in pair up position for us. And their adult son Derek, uh, is a special needs student. Um, will be doing some part-time custodial work, uh, along with his dad. And be working, you know, he'll work when his dad works for some or part of the day. So it kind of fills a role that we had. We had a part-time custodian student, uh, last year and part of the year before, so we didn't necessarily create anything new, but we see this great opportunity for this family, great opportunity for this young man, uh, who's gonna earn a paycheck and earn retirement and bank account and all that business would be good, great for our kids. Anyway, so, uh, and then we have Erica Newman in the field, uh, why is Phil in one repair job? So we are fully staffed and we're pretty doggone thrilled again with, uh, the folks that we have to work with our kids. Our education foundation had our forever pirates weekend, we saw the paper last week, the paper was fantastic, very colorful. Uh, a lot of folks were back, it was a neat weekend, a lot of fun. Education Foundation's just done a great job of putting, uh, the details of that together, whether it was the event on Friday night downtown, um, uh, the, the golf thing was obviously the big event on Saturday and then we, we, we tried to get some fishing in, a lot of things working against us, but, uh, it was well enough that we're gonna, you know, continue with that another year. Um, so, you know, those folks that are on our foundation, they're listed in the paper, I mean, you just, uh, I just appreciate you encouraging them to, to continue to, to work towards keeping our alumni connected to our community and to our school. Uh, for me, it was a thrill, 'cause I got to, uh, see some old friends, uh, meet a lot of alumni that I didn't know, obviously gone for three decades. Uh, and they were just really appreciative of, of the opportunity to come back and hang with their friends, have a great time, they sure had a great time, uh, it, it appeared. Uh, so, um, our, our first grade teacher was a heck of a bartender, uh, you know, forum, um...
My second colleague.
Well, I don't know about that, but anyway.
One poor gal had to tell me what Fuzzy Mabel, what goes in that. She was basically...
Yeah, especially since you made it like she told you, okay, go three shots of champagne.
Fuzzy Mabel doesn't have the same meaning as with your, your students, do you think?
Completely different, but, so that was a, that was just a terrific fun thing. That'll be the first weekend of August every year, we're just gonna hold it the same, uh, and so a great annual event.
Just to interject that, we couldn't have done it without the support of the community and the, some of the alumni that...
Yes, of course, Chris is on the foundation.
And we had great support, I mean, so that really made the pin prizes more exciting and I think that's what made it so fun was the great support.
We did hear a lot of great com, compliments on how great, how great it was. They're looking forward to coming back.
Gymnas health.
Yeah, they just, we, all, most all the workers on the front side and so when it comes time to play golf, they just play golf and we had, we had Bob Green and, and Mo out cooking burgers, they had a great time. Those Tasmin showed up too, but those three kind of managed the grill and Bob was playing his music and, I mean, there was just energy, there was just good fun and energy, you know, throughout. But, uh, we, we've reflected on it, we know some things we need to do just a little bit different, but this baby's gonna grow and, and, uh, we think just gonna continue to be a, a, really a, a, a fun opportunity for our alumni.
I think when we started the whole process a year and a half ago, we thought if we could get fifteen to eighteen teams, we ended up with twenty-two.
We had twenty-one teams.
Twenty-one.
Uh, and, and it, it was a quasi-full golf course. We could back it to twenty-seven and by gosh, someday we're gonna have to sit, consider whether we go to thirty-six and just say, folks, it's gonna be a nice slow day, you know, and it would with thirty-six. But, but, I mean, we're, yeah, we were, we were pretty doggone pleased with the number of teams that we had uh, for the first time for that. And we, and the Lord blessed us with great weather and that made a great difference. Of course, we had a hole in one from an alum. What a neat, I mean, just what a neat experience, what a great story, what a great story for, for that event. That's gonna create even more buzz among our alumni. So super awesome thing. I had our friends from RUTS who did the AC over here, I says, come on over here, I wanna show you something. He said, no problem, we can cool that old building. And we don't have to dig into the guts and we don't have to completely revamp the electrical systems. No problem, we can, we can AC that building. I said, get me a quote. And I, I'd hoped to have it, it might be in an envelope on my desk, uh, but anyway, we, we... Anyway, I wanna give you that opportunity to consider as opposed to let's tear that baby down and build a cloud. We talked about a lot of things, but remind, well, oh, well, what's a, what's a new realistic idea on? He, he was like, there's, this is no problem, including the office, including superintendent office, uh, which, um, we put new lights in there today.
Kelly said she could see now.
I can finally see.
I mean, we just said, hey, slap some of those LEDs that we got in the bathrooms and now throughout the elementary, slap them over here in Robin's office, just a kind of a, a good place to start. And we're gonna want them throughout here, we'll have to talk about that. But I said, can't we, isn't there a way in this day and age to provide air conditioning in this old building? And somehow into this office, he said, that's no problem, that's what we do, we can do that. So I'm gonna have something for you to consider next month. It'll be next budget cycle, but also by the time they get it done, we won't need it. But anyway, uh, we, we gotta check that out. I did buy five fans today, I wanted to say, hey, okay, we're ready for a fan, you know. Okay, so they, they're all gonna get just a boost. Uh, and, uh, and then just to share about today, we, we have, and this will be in the Norfolk paper probably tomorrow, I don't know how much press we'll get, but we had over a thousand teachers from fourteen schools uh, at the Johnny Carson Theater today. Patty, uh, you know, mentioned it a little bit, our teachers have been, uh, introduced to the Teach Like Pirate philosophy over about a year ago, I mean, I, I put that book in their hands a year ago, I've showed it to you. Well, we brought the pirate himself, uh, uh, over a year ago, I booked him and it got, it's ninety-five hundred dollars and we're splitting it times fourteen schools. So it is the cheapest national level professional development, we call it professional development, but it's more like entertainment, okay? And it, but it was inspirational and it tied in with what our folks had read in the book and, and talked about with one another. So, uh, a fun time at Johnny Carson Theater this morning. Our staff stayed, uh, at Norfolk Public School, Norfolk High School this morning. We had their media center for a couple hours in the afternoon to reconnect, to digest, uh, seeing Dave Burgess live, uh, have some discussion topics, some discussion points from the morning and from the book. Uh, so much better way for teachers to start the school year than to show up and have to listen to Kelly talk about business, which they're gonna get tomorrow. Um, so anyway, I appreciate you supporting that, uh, it, it was a, it was a lot of fun. And we're fortunate that we have that many other schools in northeast Nebraska saying, sure, we'll schedule the start of our school year calendar, you know, around, including Norfolk High School, which without them, it would have been a shut-off in advance. So, so that was a neat thing for us today, there are a couple meetings out of district and I've already burned through six and a half vacation days between now and next July. It won't take many between now and June.
Do you have the breakdown on these enrollment, like high school, girls and boys in high school?
I, 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 I don't, I can get that for you. I can provide a... Yep, 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 in fact, in fact, uh, every other month or something like that, or once or twice a year, I'll give you the grade by grade breakdown, I'll stick that, just so you can, yeah, just kind of see.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you all for coming. See you next month.
Trent, can you stop by tomorrow, get your binder of policies, they'll be in quiz.
You gotta do a quiz. This is the one. Let's memorize my next one.
Bring your reference.